Yep.
One o'clock. The regular meeting of the Annapolis City Council on Monday, April 13th, 2020 will be called to order at 7:00 PM. At this time, would everyone willing and able, please, you don't have to stand. Please listen while I give the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The last invocation is a poem by Langston Hughes, a poem about Helen Keller. This is a poem about how we can't allow obstacles to get in the way of moving forward. He, in the dark, found light brighter than many ever see. She, within herself, found loveliness through the soul's own mystery. And now, the world receives from her dower the message of strength and inner power. Amen.
Amen.
Mr. Mayor?
We can't hear you.
It's your mic, Mark. You need to do your mic.
Yeah, I'm just asking everyone to go on mute when they're not speaking so to make background noise.
Thank you. Now, for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley?
Yes.
Alderman Tierney?
Aye, here.
Alderman Peown?
I'm here.
Alderman Pendell Charles?
Here.
Alderman Finlayson?
Present.
Alderman Rodriguez?
Here.
Alderman Gay? Alderman Gay? Thank you. Alderman Savage?
Present.
Alderman Arnett?
Present.
Mr. City Attorney, please present the first item on the agenda.
Sir, the first item on the agenda is State of the City Address, Mr. Mayor.
Regina?
Um, yes, sir.
Is that, that's not on my agenda that way, is that?
It's, it's fine. They're gonna do it right now. You can present it.
So, in, uh...
Go ahead with your pre-statement, sir.
Okay, so, uh, I want to tell everybody in the city of Annapolis that it is time your city is stepping up. City employees are doing what we ask of them. This city is being prepared, this county is prepared, and the state of Maryland is prepared. We are in a good place to ride out this terrible thing that has happened to the world. And the notices that we were getting, I want the public to know, I share the same frustration. We, we look around the world and we see the way that people get over this and the way we get back to some kind of new normal is to have the ability to test. We look at, America has just arrived at the 500,000 positive cases of COVID. And then we look at Germany and they are testing 500,000 people a week, just to put it in perspective. So, we are not going to get back to normal until we get the federal help to, to get to a place where people have confidence to go out in public and have confidence to put their children in front of a teacher that has been tested or we know is safe, or a shopkeeper, or a policeman, or a nurse. This is where we have to go. I urge any of you in the public that have any kind of pull to reach out federally and say, "This city is ready. We have done the drills. We have done a drive-through flu testing. We have processed over 1,000 people in a day." We could test the city of Annapolis in under two months, the entire city, if we were given the resources to do it. I will advocate for that on a county level, a state level, and yell from the rooftops as long as I can because we are not going to get to the other side of this to feel won again without that ability. So, thank you. I'd like to go next to the State of the City, which we have pre-taped in this unusual time that we are living in. Thank you. Good evening, Annapolis. Thank you for tuning in. This is the city's second-ever virtual council meeting. In Annapolis, the COVID-19 pandemic has created a seismic shift in the landscape of our city.
I can't hear.
Coronavirus came to Maryland a little more than six weeks ago. Since then, Governor Hogan ordered a lockdown of non-essential businesses and then a stay-home order. I'm gonna get Julian to rerun it. Thank you.
I can see.
Do we have a mic we can put in front of the, whatever computer's playing it?
Yeah, we're having some technical difficulties, so, um... Let's try this again. Thank you. Our, our technical team in the city have been doing an amazing job. We are learning all this stuff on the fly, so thank you, everybody out there, for your patience. Good evening, Annapolis. Thank you for tuning in. This is the city's second-ever virtual council meeting. In Annapolis, the COVID-19 pandemic has created a seismic shift in the landscape of our city. Coronavirus came to Maryland a little more than six weeks ago. Since then, Governor Hogan ordered a lockdown of non-essential businesses and then a stay-home order that remains in place. In the city, we declared a state of emergency in mid-March and partially activated our Emergency Operations Centre. COVID-19 has changed the way we all look at the world and our global interconnectedness. But it has also changed the day-to-day interactions we have with people in our own communities and neighborhoods. Our children are out of school and we've all become de facto math and science teachers. We are frightened for the well-being of elderly residents and those who are recuperating from injury or illness in nursing homes and rehabilitation facilities. Perfectly healthy people are being struck down in their prime of their lives by this virus, which seems to start like so many springtimes in Maryland with symptoms akin a little cold or flu bug. Our beloved city of Annapolis is hurting. Our residents are hurting. This may be one of the most painful episodes any of us will ever live through. We continue to ask residents of this city to stick with it, to stay home, to practice social distancing when out for essential activities. Please continue to wash your hands and wipe down your surfaces and wear a face covering to protect others in case you are contagious but are not yet symptomatic. Most of us have never walked the historic district at 5:00 PM and seen the streets deserted. It can be eerie and disconcerting. But during this time, the creeks and the rivers still run, boats remain at their moorings awaiting a sail on the bay on a beautiful summer day. Restaurants and retail stores will reawaken and once again be bustling with customers. This episode will become part of our history of this city. Sometimes it's hard to see, but there will be life on the other side of coronavirus. When we reimagine, we will get the custom to a new normal. One of the reasons we will be able to bounce back is because of the hard work of the people in this city. I'm talking about the people in the private sector and county and state and also those who work directly for the city of Annapolis. Please indulge me while I take a few minutes to honor and thank some of the people in this city who are going above and beyond during this time.
My TV is fine at home.
Our public safety staff are working long hours at peril to their own health and well-being. Our police are out in the field working the usual crime beat but also protecting the public by maintaining the governor's stay-at-home order. They are doing it with kindness and understanding. They know how hard this is on people, especially young people. Our firefighters are taking coronavirus patients to local hospitals and hoping that they have taken all the precautions necessary to keep themselves and their families safe from this virus. But they are also fighting fires. Our bus drivers are transporting people, including medical personnel, to their jobs on the front lines of this pandemic, at doctors' offices and hospitals, as well as grocery stores and pharmacies. Meanwhile, our city staff continue to perform in their jobs as we deliver essential services to residents. If you see a city worker or other essential worker out doing their job, please be kind and thank them. This is tough on everyone and people are stepping up to take on responsibilities and tasks they've never been asked to do. Later during tonight's meeting, the 2021 operating and capital budget will be introduced. While we've been through tough times in the city's 300-plus-year history, we will have to focus on tightening our belts this year because while we have been spending on COVID-19 to keep residents safe, we've also seen a tremendous reduction in revenues. The budget, as introduced tonight, represents a serious and significant level of revenue loss from the general fund in the areas of tourism, recreation and parks, income tax, hotel and motel tax, permits and parking. The budget makes assumptions about these losses so that we can continue to operate the city within our means. Residents of Annapolis already have high expectations of services we can deliver. We go to work within a tight calculations but continue to deliver a high quality of services to residents with the resources available. I want to take a moment to thank City Manager David Gerald and Finance Director Jody Dickinson, who have worked long hours each day and gone many, many days without a break to get the mayor's budget prepared for introduction tonight. They have worked with all department heads in the city to make decisions about how every penny of our funds are allocated. Thank you both. Next, I want to talk generally about the State of the City and how we go from a complete shutdown here in Annapolis to seeing what is on the other side of this pandemic. It will not happen tomorrow or in the immediate future, but we, we are hopeful that we will return to normalcy in the coming weeks and months. First, the capital projects the city has allocated funding for will continue to move forward. I ask the council to consider how big a role these projects will play in the recovery, both economically and emotionally for the residents of our city. These projects are not just expenditure lines on the ledger. They are jobs, they are opportunity, they are hope. We have the new Truxton Park Pool, which was set to open in early summer. The opening is on hold for now because of the stay-at-home order, but the construction is ongoing. And when the order is lifted, we'll be able to swim in our beautiful new facility. Over at Recreation and Parks, Director Archie Trader and Pool Manager Jennifer Jennings are working on opening day events and ribbon cuttings for when that day comes. The project for the rebuild of Hillman Garage and the future flood mitigation project at City Dock are continuing with the RFPs and the two vendors doing their best to win over city approval. Last year, I talked about the temporary flood mitigation at City Dock. That solution seems to be holding, aside from a few extraordinary flooding events. We are also working on temporary solutions on compromised street side ahead of a multimillion-dollar pumping station project that will be constructed later this year after the boat show. In early 2021, we expect to be able to hand over a part of our parcel to install the new First Amendment memorial in honor of the five slain at the Capitol Gazette. That memorial is being funded by private funds and generous grants from the state of Maryland to the Office of Anaronda County Executive, Stuart Pickman. The Department of Public Works building on Hudson Street continues to move in the design and build stage. We hope to break ground on that project later this year. We have tennis and pickleball courts at Truxton and new pedestrian and bicycle greenways, including the extension of the Poplar Trail. Delivering of these capital projects is possible because we set those funds aside and plan for those projects in the right way. At last week's city council meeting, we established a new task force to help small business recover from COVID-19. This task force, these task force members are being selected now from the various business communities and industries. The immediate priority is helping business owners get to the available state and federal grant and loan resources to not only make payments for mortgages and utilities and their necessary expenses, but to also help keep workers employed. They are also pointing workers to assistance, including unemployment and temporary cash assistance. These programs have been overwhelmed and if you're trying to get in to ask help for help, Governor Hogan has assured Marylanders that all compensation packages will be retroactive. If you have been trying to call in or go on the website and haven't been able to get through, keep trying on off-peak hours. They are also looking at support for gig economy workers, interventions for arts and cultural organizations, rental assistance for economically distressed workers, tax deferrals, technical assistance, workshops and more. Stay tuned for more about these initiatives. When the city gets back to our new normal, we want to assure you that our ongoing initiatives, including practical and necessary services like pothole and sidewalk repairs, sewer line replacements and road resurblings, these will continue. We will continue with our historic preservation initiatives, community development programs, long-term planning, including our 2020 Comprehensive Plan, environmental and resiliency initiatives related to energy efficiency, tree planting, storm water and storm restoration. These will all continue. We will continue to serve all wards of our city to assist marginalized communities with resources, bringing help to healthcare and addiction, jobs and workforce development, activities and opportunities for youth and more. We will continue with our quality of life initiatives that make living in Annapolis so special, our concerts at City Dock through Art in Public Places Commission, summer camps through the Department of Recreation and Parks and city-sponsored events like parades and festivals. Annapolis, this will continue to be the city you love, the city I fell in love with. We will find a way to see a new tomorrow for our city, for this community and for each other. Thank you. So, I'd like to thank all the councillors for muting their microphones during that. I apologize, there was no audio for us. There was audio for the rest of the public, so thank you for your patience. We will get a copy out to you. There'll be some great late-night television for you. So, this is a new normal, so thank you, everybody. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, the next item is approval of the agenda with amendments.
So, this time I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended to add O-15-20 Waterfront Maritime Mixed District on First Reader. Could I get a motion, a motion from Alderman Arnett? In a second, please. Alderman Finlayson? Okay. Any discussion? Yep. No discussion? Okay. Madam City Clerk, we will be calling the roll like this individually. Please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley?
I'm mute your microphone.
Thank you. Mayor Buckley?
Yes?
Alderman Pendell Charles?
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez?
Aye.
Alderman Gay?
Aye.
Alderman Savage?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Tierney?
Aye.
Alderman Peown?
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you all. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, the next item on the agenda is petition, reports and communications update from the mayor.
So, I've had already too much screen time, so I will hand it over to any of you that have any petitions and reports to, um... Forward to Alderman Arnett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Finance Committee will begin its budget hearings tomorrow. The agenda starts at 10 o'clock and we'll be getting an overview of the budget and related legislation, the budget ordinance and related legislation, the operating budget, the capital budget and budget projections and also a discussion of the caffè.
Thank you, Alderman Arnett. Anybody else? Alderman Pendell Charles?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our Public Safety Committee meeting was upstaged last week by our first virtual city council meeting, so we look forward to our next meeting on Monday, May the 4th at 4:00 PM. Thank you.
Alderman Finlayson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Rules and City Government Committee will meet tomorrow in... No, not in city council chambers, virtually, starting at 4:00. And the agenda has already been posted. I'm afraid I don't have it in front of me. Thank you.
Anybody else? Alderman Gay?
Lastly, there is open comment still available for the five-year consolidated housing community development plan and it closes at the end of the month and it can be submitted online.
Thank you. Anybody else? I'm sure it's hard to get things done now, but thank you very much for that. I might like to read into the record the following person's submitted comments. Monique Leichardt, Felicia, Linda Mundy and Yarrow Yara. Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, the next, the next item on the agenda is Consent Calendar.
Mr. City Attorney, I've got a question.
Alderman Savage, sorry, City Attorney, Alderman Savage?
Yeah, sorry. Thank you. So, what's the, um, are, is there a way we can review the public comments that have been submitted? Will they get sent out to all of us or is there, are they consolidated somewhere?
Yes, they will. Regina?
They've already been sent to you. We sent them to you at about 3:45 today. We forwarded the actual emails to you.
Thank you, Regina. Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. City Attorney, thank you.
Yes, approval of the consent calendar.
You gonna read it out? You gonna read it out, Mark, or not?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Alderman Arnett is raising her hand.
Yep, Alderman Arnett?
Just gonna move approval of the consent calendar.
In a second, please.
Second.
Ellie, you're nearly there. You're... All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any post? Thank you.
Aye.
I'm done as a roll. Call the mayor Buckley?
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll. Aye.
Alderman Pendell Charles?
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez?
Aye.
Alderman Gay?
Aye.
Alderman Savage?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Tierney?
Aye.
Alderman Peown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item is items for public hearing, beginning with O-3919, dwelling units.
So, we have received comments from the following persons and then I accorded them to the councillors. Lynn Thonard, Alex Pline, John Hammond and William Small. I accept into the record, am on random to the Annapolis City Council from the Planning Commission dated February 10th, 2020, memorandum from Planning and Zoning Director Nash to the Planning Commission dated December 17th, 2019. Alderman Arnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, because this is such a new process and quite frankly, I still haven't found the emails with the public comments, I'm sure they're there. I would like to hold all of these public hearings open for at least one more council meeting so that people can get used to the link that they can use to make their comments.
Alderman Finlayson?
Um, yes. Mr. Mayor, is it appropriate to indicate as you share with us who sent these, whether they were in support or in opposition to the legislation to which they're speaking?
The City Attorney to talk on that or Regina? I don't have that information in front of me. I'm not sure if I'm allowed to.
The emails are like little summaries of their opinions, so we really can't say if they're in favor or support. It's a matter of an opinion. Some of them, I really couldn't tell.
Okay. I thought clarify for those who are watching.
They will be available. They're gonna be attached to the minutes.
Okay. Thank you.
So, Alderman Savage had his hand up and then Alderman Tierney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I just want to make a suggestion. I think it'd be more helpful if we could almost get the public comments all consolidated into one document per topic. So, all the, because if right now the emails are just scattered and separate, maybe we can get one document at the close of the public hearing.
Let me ask Regina on that. Thank you. Regina?
We'll be happy to work on that, but we have a deadline to submit the written testimony at 3:00. And on city council meeting dates, we try our best to get them to you and we were so getting some after 4:00, but we had to be up here at 5:00 to get ready for the meeting. So, we will do our best to consolidate them for you. And maybe just at 3:30, put them all in one email, send them. We can do that.
I think that's a good idea, Rob. So, we'll work on that. You know, we're still refining this as we go. I think it's a good idea. Can we delay? We will need a motion for that. And Alderman Tierney?
Yeah, I just wanted to suggest, you know, I, I looked through all of them and, um... Maybe we can add a box or something for or against because we do have a box that references the legislation. So, we know that they're referring to a specific piece of legislation and perhaps it would be easier because you're right, they are just sort of, some of them are sort of the stream of consciousness, some, you know, opinion. And also I noticed that there was one that wasn't, I think it was meant to be comments by the general public because it didn't reference a piece of legislation. So, I wasn't sure how we address those. Are we still accepting, um, you know, public opinion as we did during comments by the general public? Yes.
Regina?
Um, any written testimony that was submitted that didn't address, it didn't address a public hearing on your agenda, the mayor read them into the record when he read the update from the mayor. It was only three.
Oh, that's what those were?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So, we do put, we do put, we have a place for those. Okay. Okay. But yeah, it would be good to have a box just for or against or something.
That's a good idea. Alderman Peown?
We can't hear Fred.
Microphone Fred?
Fred is muted.
Sorry about that. I think that, I, I don't think that's a great idea. I think we have to just pass them on as is. A lot of...
A lot of these things will say, "Look, we've got X, Y, and Z going for it, but then for A, B, and C reasons, I don't like it." I don't think it's... That burden is one that ought to be put on the city clerk or people in his office, or yours either, for that matter, to determine whether these are for or against. Just pass them on.
No, no, I was... Like, when you do a public testimony at a committee meeting or a commission meeting, when you sign, you say for or against. It would be up to the person writing the testimony to say whether they're for or against, that's all. Not Regina, no. She already has enough work to do.
Nah. I just think you ought to pass them on, and we'll read them for whatever it's worth and judge them accordingly.
Okay, we'll work on that. Alderman Finlayson?
Yeah, would it be appropriate to bump back the time when these comments are due so that the clerk does have sufficient time to organize and get it out to us? Because if she gets it at 3 o'clock, as she just said, and some come in even later, and then they're getting ready for the meeting and having to organize the testimony, I think that's a little much. So is it possible to move it back to noon, let's say, that all testimony has to be in by that time?
Let me get Regina to speak on that, I think there were timing issues with the last one.
Well, 12 o'clock would be fine, but we're still going to have people to submit it up until the meeting time, so we will get them to you as soon as we possibly can. That's all we can do. Everybody who submitted written testimony today, even if it came in up until we walked upstairs at 5, we did submit their information to you. So you'll get it.
Thank you.
The cutoff time isn't going to make a difference, we're still going to get documents after that time.
Alderman Savage has his hand up?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. My suggestion is, because the public hearing, they don't close until the mayor closes them at these meetings, virtual or not, so really, they could be submitting public comments now until we close them. And so I'd suggest that the day after the meetings, you know, we send some consolidated list of comments to us, because we never... We'll very rarely vote on legislation that has a public hearing on the same night, unless there's some suspension of the rules, so we should be able to do that next day.
As we evolve the technology, Rob, that's a good idea as well. Regina?
We will provide you with every single thing we get. You will get it. And we can conduct... And we will print them, if you like, and scan them, and send them in one email, if you like. Everything related to this meeting, with the cutoff of after this meeting tonight.
So do we have a motion to extend for one week, Ross?
That was my motion, yes.
I'll second it.
Regina, is that okay?
Are we extending the public hearings until the next city council meeting on April 27? Okay.
Second.
Do you want to do a roll call on that, Regina?
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley?
Yes.
Alderman Pindell Charles? Alderman Pindell Charles? As she said that, okay.
Aye.
Thank you. Alderman Finlayson? Alderman Rodriguez?
Aye.
Alderman Gay?
Aye.
Alderman Savage?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Tierney?
Aye.
And Alderman Payam?
Aye.
Okay, the public hearings will be extended until April 27.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, the next item on the agenda is O-520, City Council Meetings Order of Business for the purpose of modifying order of business for regular and special meetings of the city council.
We have no comments received. Do we want to push this back as well? Anybody?
Yeah, I would move that they all be put back, actually. I think, given our situation, and we're still kind of crawling along with the virtual meetings ourselves, I don't think it's unreasonable to allow the public extra time to comment on...
We'll do them one at a time. Regina?
You just said what I was going to say.
So, motion from Alderman Payam on this one? Fred?
Yes.
Okay, second?
Second.
Let us know when you're ready for a roll call, Regina?
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley?
Yes.
Alderman Pindell Charles?
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez?
Aye.
Alderman Gay? Alderman Savage?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Tierney?
Aye.
Alderman Payam?
Aye.
That motion carries.
Rob? Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The next item on the agenda is O-620, Plan Developments, Public Housing Bolt Standards for the Purpose of Applying Height Adjustment for Certain Eligible Public Housing Development.
We received comments from the following person, Patrick Stewart, and then I'd like to read, I accept into the record a memorandum to the Annapolis City Council from the Planning Commission dated March 6, 2020, and a memorandum from Planning and Zoning Director Nash to the Planning Commission dated February 25, 2020. Alderman Arnett?
Mr. Mayor, I believe this particular piece of legislation is time-sensitive, so while I'm in general favor of pushing back and holding open public testimony, I think this one needs to get to committee and get on to the agenda for second reader.
I agree. Thank you. We all agree on that? Alderman Pindell Charles?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, my concern always has been for Ward 3 and the height restrictions, so I'll reiterate that. I've talked with Dr. Nash, as well as Mr. Gerald, our city manager, about that. So thank you.
Thank you. So we're going to declare the public hearing in O-620 closed. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The next item is O-820, Harbors and Waterfront Areas Code Updates for the Purpose of Updating Certain Definitions, Removing Oblique Language, Requiring Regular Pump-Out of a Vessel's Holding Tank, Making Stylists to Make Other Changes.
Okay. No one has received any comments. I haven't received any comments on this. We'll push this back, would anyone like to make a motion to push it back?
So moved.
Alderman Payam, seconded by Alderman Arnett. So when you're ready, Regina?
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley?
Yes.
Alderman Pindell Charles?
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez?
Aye.
Alderman Gay? Alderman Savage?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Tierney?
I just was concerned about Beth Bellis, but, no. No.
Okay. Alderman Payam?
Aye.
That motion carries.
So Ellie, if you had some information on that, it would've been okay to do the same thing if you thought that.
Well, I don't know if it was time-sensitive with the harbor master or not, that's all. I know she's worked hard on this, so...
Yeah, I don't think that this is especially time-sensitive. I think it's okay to push it for a couple more weeks.
Okay. All right. Thank you, David.
Wish no one's allowed on their boat now.
Yeah, yeah.
There have been spotting of Ross out there, I heard, with a fishing pole. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item is O-1020, Zoning Code Applications Written Notification for the Purpose of Increasing the Distance for Sending Written Notification to Abutting Property Owners for Plan Developments, Major Subdivisions, Major Site Design Applications.
There are, again, no comments received. Someone like to put a motion forward on this? Alderman Arnett?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I think we should postpone it. I'm astounded. I would have thought there might have been many comments, and I'm wondering, again, if this is because people aren't aware of the new process. So I think we should push this back. I agree with the legislation, but I think I know people who wouldn't.
A second for that, please?
Second.
When are you ready, Regina?
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley?
Yes.
Alderman Pindell Charles? Alderman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez? Alderman Gay? Alderman Gay, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
No.
Okay. Alderman Savage?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Tierney?
Aye.
Alderman Payam?
Aye.
That motion carries.
Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is Legislative Action, Second Reader, beginning with O-1119, R2 NC District Emolitions. This was postponed from an earlier meeting.
Is there a motion to adopt O-1119?
No, Mr. Mayor. I would like to postpone this for another two council meetings. I think there are some things in the draft that need work, so I'd ask council's indulgence to postpone this.
Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Regina?
For clarity, Alderman Arnett, you want this postponed until the first meeting of May?
Yes, please.
Okay. Roll call. Mayor Buckley?
Yes?
Alderman Pindell Charles? Alderman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez? Alderman Gay?
Aye.
Alderman Savage?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Tierney?
Aye.
Alderman Payam?
Aye.
And that motion carries.
You and Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is O-1919, R2 NC Adequate Public Facilities, Auto Transportation Facility for the Purpose of Clarifying the Circumstances That Would Require Traffic Impact Analysis for Proposed Project, Clarifying Standards To Be Used In Term Adequacy and Generally Relating to Adequacy Of Auto Transportation Facility.
Got a motion to withdraw this? Alderman Arnett?
Not to withdraw, to postpone, again, for two council meetings. We're... This is getting tied in with the whole response to the Board of Appeals decision on the shopping center, and I believe we do have good substitute language, but I need a meeting with the city manager, Gerald, and city attorney Lyle to figure out exactly where we are on that, and I think we're going to be having that meeting later this week.
Okay, do we have a second, please? Alderman Pindell Charles?
I have a question. You indicated the Court of Appeals.
I just need a second before...
Oh, second.
Thank you. Yes?
No, I have just a 25-word or less question about the posture of the case in the Court of Appeals. 25 words or less.
I have no information on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, so I see on here that it's been referred to the Planning Commission has... Have we heard back from the Planning Commission? Has it been on their agenda? Are they having any meetings going forward? Anytime soon?
It has been before the... Well, I'm not sure whether this has. Do we have an attachment?
No, we don't.
No. So... And that's... This was actually something where I was working with city manager Sutherland. She had a major rewrite, which I subscribed to fully. I thought it was a much improved document, and I think we need to get that introduced as a substitute amendment, then it can go to the Planning Commission. But I do want to make sure that I'm properly coordinated with the city attorney and the city manager on how we're handling all of the adequate public facilities. So that's what's slowing this down.
Alderman Attorney?
I believe Rhonda might be asking what happened at the Board of Appeals meeting, Ross, that you and I were at. I don't know if everybody's caught up with the second go-around.
Yeah, so on the Board of Appeals, I'm sorry, Rhonda, I misunderstood.
Oh, I thought you said the Court of Appeals, okay.
No, no, Board of Appeals.
Okay, thank you.
Do you know what happened there?
No, I don't.
The Board of Appeals sent back the decision from Planning and Zoning. They didn't override them, but they questioned on some of them whether the proper processes have been used, and some of the support for those. I think it was a very good decision on the Board of Appeals, and I think that the planning staff have been working very hard. Some of it was a misunderstanding, some things that are required by code to be promulgated had in fact been promulgated and were available through the city's website, but no one really was aware of that. So I think a lot of good things are happening, and we're going to clean up the process, but we just need a little bit more time to get there.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Savage?
I was wondering if somebody could, on staff, could look into the Planning Commission, because I'm, again, looking at the list, it was sent to them in April of last year, and we still don't have a report from them, so I'm just wondering what the holdup is.
I'm the holdup.
Oh, because the Eastport project, or you?
When it went before them, I testified at that time that I had a redraft coming, and also I had a request from the Eastport Civic Association to be allowed to give input. I advised them that they might want to wait for their input until we had the substitution amendment... The substitute amendment, and so they also were waiting to see the substitute amendment. But the holdup was on me, not on the Planning Commission.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, Regina, you need a roll call?
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley?
Yes.
Alderman Pindell Charles?
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez?
Aye.
Alderman Gay?
Aye.
Alderman Savage?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Tierney?
Aye.
And Alderman Payam?
Aye.
And that motion carries.
Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item is O-3819, Housing and Community Development Committee for the Purpose of Renaming The Housing and Community Development Committee, Clarifying Certain Powers and Functions, and Making Stopments to Changes.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Motion to postpone?
Mr. Mayor, sorry. I'd like a motion to postpone, yeah, please.
So we have a motion to postpone, second, Alderman Arnett? Any discussion?
Yeah, why?
Mr. City Attorney?
We'll need a date, Mr. Mayor? Postponed until?
I'd suggest until the next meeting, April 27. As the original sponsor, I understand there was some conversation in the Rules and Government Committee that I think we need to put a discussion on, and I know a couple colleagues who are interested in introducing a couple amendments. So I would love to tackle those during the course of this week, and then we can have those conversations, and then we can blow it on in the next meeting.
Thank you. Alderman Gay, you had your hand up, sir? No? Alderman Attorney?
Yeah, I know Teresa Wellman has been out. Has she had a chance? I guess this question is directed to David. Has Teresa Wellman had a chance to review this?
She has, actually. She submitted some of the initial feedback that made part of the original legislation.
Okay, great.
Okay. Alderman Payam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any of the attachments with this. Perhaps we could have something attached before we meet again? I've got, you know, none of the amendments staff reported. Basically, when I hit it, it says Safari can't open the page, da-da-da-da-da-da-da. It's all screwed up on mine, I don't have anybody else's.
Ours are open. Regina, Regina has something to say?
Well, um, just for clarification, um, O-3819 is scheduled to go to the Rules Committee on May the 12th. So, Alderman Rodriguez, could you, um, make your postponement until the second meeting in May to allow the Rules Committee to review O-3819?
Sure. My understanding was that they already reviewed it, right?
And they postponed it.
We, we haven't, we haven't completed our postponement action.
Okay, yeah. Okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
Alderman Finlayson had her hand up?
Um, yeah, that was gonna be my question, because the Rules and City Government Committee meets tomorrow. And I thought, I, I heard him say that he was waiting for our, um, recommendation. So, with the two, with it being delayed two meetings, we should have adequate time to address it.
Thank you. Roll call?
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley?
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Savage, sorry, didn't see you there.
That's okay. Um, yeah, so, is, for, just to give the city attorney a heads-up, uh, I'd like, whenever this does come back to Rules and Government, I'd like to discuss this more, 'cause my, my concern, I guess, is having a commi, a commission that has alter persons as its members. And I also, I think we need more of an explanation of how this committee currently fits into the process. Maybe if we can get, um, Ms. Wellman to come to the, or, sorry, virtually, I guess, to the meeting to give us some information on that. Because it's my understanding as well that they, this committee currently votes on some of the community grants that are, are given by the city. And so, is it appropriate to have the council on there, as well as the housing authority, as a member of this committee, um, who, I think there may be conflicts of interest? So, um, I think while we're in there working on this, this legislation, we might want to look at what legally would be the best way forward and consistent with our other commissions and how they're set up.
We're prepared to offer comments on that, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Alderman Savage.
I, I didn't hear, I didn't hear Michael.
Uh, we'll, we'll be prepared, uh, at the meeting to offer comments on those. We pretty much concur with your assessment.
Yeah, I do, I do too.
Alderman Finlayson?
Um, yes, question for Tia. Uh, tomorrow is our Rules and City Government Committee. Is it on the agenda for tomorrow? I don't recall.
No, no, it's not.
Speak, Tia, speak.
So, so will there be another opportunity before the May meeting?
That's why Regina asked for it to be rescheduled until, uh, the second meeting in May, so that you guys can have an opportunity.
The second meeting in May, not the second week of, yeah. Okay, that's, that's good. Thank you.
Alderman Gay had his hand up next?
Yeah, no, um, I'm completely fine with it being postponed to the second meeting, um, in May. I'd like my colleagues who are not here to have an opportunity to catch up on everything. Uh, but I just do have a quick question in regards to the last meeting that we had, the Rules and City Government, uh, meeting. I didn't remember us postponing it. I thought after that we had agreed on the four amendments that were laid out.
No, it was postponed, um, so that you guys could have time to speak with the, uh, city attorney. And I believe you guys did have a meeting, and then it was gonna come back to rules.
So, it wouldn't be going to rules tomorrow?
No, with it going virtual, um, they wanted to have a couple of minor things, well, not minor, the things that they really needed to put on the agenda.
Thank you. Alderman Arnett?
Yes. So, we postponed for the two reasons that Alderman Savage gave. First of all, the city attorney gave us some, uh, things to consider in terms of the composition of the committee, but also we felt we needed to hear from Teresa Wellman. And so, we asked that it be postponed until we could, uh, get both of those things.
Yeah?
So, Mike, in the, uh, conversation that we had in regards to, uh, the fourth amendment number, that have not fixed any of the concerns that we had?
Sorry?
I thought.
Can you repeat that question, Alderman Gay? Sorry?
The, in regards to amendment four, I thought that was fixing some of the concerns that we had in terms of the, uh, duties of the, uh...
Need, need Tia to speak to that?
Amendment number four is attached to the legislation. I don't know if that took care of everything, and I'm not sure if the other committee members, um, have reviewed it or not.
Okay. Can we take a vote on it?
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley?
Yes?
Alderman Pendell-Chaunce?
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez?
Aye.
Alderman Gay?
Aye.
Alderman Savage?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett? Alderman Tierney?
Aye.
Alderman Payam?
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, the next item on the agenda is Resolution R-1820, 2020 Annapolis Film Festival Circulator Fee Waiver, for the purpose of identifying the 2020 Annapolis Film Special Event that will be held at some point during 2020, waiving fee for running the circulator during that event.
Is there a motion to withdraw this from Alderman Finlayson? Is that right?
Correct.
Obviously, we didn't need that. I waited for that trolley.
I'll second that. I second the motion.
Okay. I don't think there's any discussion, 'cause it's not on. Roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley?
Yes?
Alderman Pendell-Chaunce?
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez?
Aye.
Alderman Gay?
Aye.
Alderman Savage?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Tierney?
Aye.
Alderman Payam?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the next item is Approval of the Agenda Legislative Actions, first reader, uh, beginning with O-1520, Waterfront Maritime Mixed District, for the purpose of allowing professional officers in the WMM zoning district in accordance to certain standards, amend, amending certain parking standards, and making stylistic changes.
So, a motion to adopt O-1520 on first reader?
Second.
Okay. Just in a second, from Alderman Pendell-Chaunce. Um, any discussion? Um, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley?
Yes?
Alderman Pendell-Chaunce?
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez?
Aye.
Alderman Gay?
Aye.
Alderman Savage?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Tierney?
Aye.
And Alderman Payam?
Yes!
That motion carries.
Okay, I'll refer O-1520 to the Planning Commission, the Maritime Advisory Board, and the Rules and City Government Committee. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
I'm saddened to report, Mr. Mayor, that, completely.
Okay, well, before we wrap it up, and Fred wraps it up, I just want to say, you all did great. Everyone did a great job. I apologize for the state-of-the-city video. It did go out to the public, so it was only, uh, us guys on this Zoom meeting that, uh, suffered. So, I apologize again. We will get better with the technology, but I think Julian and the team did a great job. Besides that, thank you, everybody. Um, Alderman, anything else for good order? Alderman Payam?
I, I totally agree with you that, uh, I think this is not as easy to set up as it might appear to be, particularly when we have to hook the public up somehow, some way. Um, and I think that, uh, our folks have done as good a job as could be done for the first time around, uh, will only get better. And, uh, I, I for one am, uh, very, very happy, by and large, with the job that was done. After saying that, before anybody else can say anything, I'm gonna...
There's a little, there's a little bit of stuff just before you wrap it up, Fred. Mr. City Manager hasn't said anything yet?
I just wanted to say that, you know, the budget was, was submitted today as part of this meeting on time. And I just want to publicly thank Jody Dickinson and Katie Conley for all of the work that they did over the last weeks and weeks in getting this budget ready under these very trying times. So, thank you, thank you.
All right.
Hand, hand up? Alderman Tierney?
Thank, is, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You mentioned about, um, uh, the beginning of the meeting, about our, our shortage in testing, and that you want us to reach out to powers above. What, what, especially in our, in our disadvantaged communities, we are, we have a shortage of testing. What, what do you recommend we do? Who do we write to? Um, how do we push for that testing where we need it?
I mean, I, I just know anyone that knows anywhere out of state. I mean, I, I don't know what to do. I know the governor is frustrated. I just spoke to his chief of staff just before this meeting. He said, "All they talk about." And, and we all watch the news every single day, right? And so, we know that the way you get onto the other side and get confidence back is that intersection of, of herd immunity, um, and the, and the, um, uh, testing, mass testing. And so, um, we are talking about, um, antibody testing. We can make that happen, at least, you know, a lot of us think, "Maybe I had it." You know, "Maybe I had it, but I didn't get the symptoms of other people." If you've got the antibodies, you could go through a drive-through and test that. That would be some way to get it started, and it would show that we are forward-thinking. But it's all about capacity, and you need to get that capacity, uh, from a federal level.
We'll be the squeaky wheel.
Alderman Arnett?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, two points of information. One, will the public testimony get attached to the, uh, appropriate legislation in Granica so that when we consider those pieces of legislation, we'll have that?
Yes.
Thank you. And the second one is, is there any way we can get Fred in landscape instead of portrait in the picture?
Hey, look, my, my cheeks are showing beautifully.
Regina?
One more thing while everybody's here. Um, David asked if we were having a work session on Thursday? Haven't gotten any feedback, so, are we?
What's the agenda?
We can get, well, you will get that tomorrow if he says yes.
I'd like to go.
Yeah, I, I recommend that we do. Is, is there any, uh, any concerns about having it? It's normally scheduled, this is the third Thursday, so it's a regularly scheduled meeting. I think we have some worthwhile agenda items. Um, so I would suggest that we go ahead with that instead of waiting a whole nother month. But, um, are there any concerns about that?
No.
No?
No.
Um, Alderman Gay, did you have something? No?
Yeah, I was saying, I would think we just...
I can understand you, David.
And, 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 and so, we'll go to Fred. I just want to thank Jody again, and the finance team, and David, and all the people that worked over this weekend. They put in a ton of hours to produce a budget, uh, uh, under dire circumstances. And all of our departments, I want to thank them public, you know, publicly for all the sacrifice they've made to, to shave 5% to, to just get us to a balanced budget here. So, uh, thank you. Um, Alderman Payam?
I move it, will you, Chair?
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Leading adjourned.